Okay, so welcome everyone. This is the September monthly meeting of the Sustainable Bethel Commission. I am Catherine Hebert, the chairman, and we'll call the meeting to order at whatever time you have.
Yep.
All right, so the first over business pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, so this is the next item on the agenda is the public comment correspondence. Now, was there any correspondence in your park? Okay, so the way this works, I don't know if you have been told, is we listen to you, but we don't talk. This is your chance to talk. And we, so whoever wants to start, please tell us your name and where you live. And then if you can just say what you're going to say for two or three minutes each, that would be great.
I'll start. My name is Frank Boron. I live at 3 Benson Road in Connecticut here. Came to the meeting this evening to address flood mitigation. We purchased our home in the summer of 2019. And every year since, the flooding has gotten worse. The most recent issues which I believe everybody experienced, that you know, I had almost four feet of water in my backyard. So I don't really know much history about the town or what they've done in the past to help with some of the mitigation, but I'd like to understand more. And I'd like to know if there's a plan moving forward in the future to help it's underwater, some issues. So that's why I attend this.
I'm Greg Bondar. I live at 4 Benson Road. I live across the street from Frank. The river runs or the creek, whatever it is, runs behind him. So his backyard floods, but it also comes up our street. And the last time it flooded was like August.
August 2024.
Yeah, it came up like halfway through our side yard. And it just, like he said, it just keeps getting worse. Every time there's a bad rain, it comes further and further up. So we're just worried about it. And like he said, also still wondering what can be done, if the river can be dredged or, you know, whatever can be done to help stop the flooding.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I'm also at 4 Benson.
Your name and your address.
My name is Lauren Bondarheart, and I live at 4 Benson Road here in Bethel. And my husband and I have been living here for about 20 years. And we've experienced some flooding on Benson Road. So as my husband and said, it is getting worse every year. And I think the worst that we had was last August, last year of 2024, where it did come up into our road and also into our yard was flooded and part of our basement. So I'm here to see what can be done to help to prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Sherman, and I live at 14 Fleetwood Avenue. And I've been there since 1982. And there's been flooding all the time, every year. And it's been getting worse. And it's in my basement, and it's halfway up my lawn. And I was even evacuated. One year, one time, I forget what storm it was. But the cars were floating down the street. It was very freaky, but it's happening again and again. And I wanted to know what we could do about that, too. At one point, they sent permission slips home that I had given permission that they could go across my lawn and dredge. That never happened, so I don't know what they did.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Carol Shankman. I live at 128 Fleetwood Avenue in Bethel. My property and France property kind of meet together. So when it floods on the stream, it looks like a lake. And that's pretty much what it looks like. And it's very deep, and it gets closer and closer to our home also. So like everyone else here, we're all neighbors. So the complete area gets flooded from Lauren's address, Frank's, ours, and other neighbors also. That's about it.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Like I said, this is the public comment where you get to comment, and this gets into our record. And it's the start of a discussion for the commission later on on the agenda. Okay, so we don't have any guest speaker tonight. My chairman report is very simple. We have a new member, Debbie Light. She was approved by the Board of Selectmen last night, but not sworn in yet. So she's not available. She's not a voting member yet, but she will be a voting member by our next meeting in October. So welcome, Debbie.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'm aware of the flooding in that area.
Oh, you are.
Yes. Lived here since 1970, so yeah.
So that's really all I have for my chairman's report. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of approval of minutes from the last meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay. All right. Krista gave a, you raised your hand, Krista. All right, is there any discussion, any changes? Anybody? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next item on the agenda is the discussion, the consideration of the bylaws. Krista, you were on the committee. Did you want to present? I saw some, I made some comments. I know Tia made some comments, and I don't know if anybody else, I don't think, I didn't see anybody else's, but it was the committee that you were a part of. Did you want to say anything about it? No, you're on mute. You're on mute. Krista, you're on mute.
I got it. I do not think that I saw any of the comments.
I had no comment, Krista. Everything looked good to me.
Okay, okay. Was that?
Not my comments because she sent me a text back or an email back and said she got my comments.
Okay. Was that on the email string that?
Yes.
Because I have.
Yeah, if you go to the Google Doc, it's all in there.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Oh, I see this now.
So I think Amanda is going to try to bring it up on the screen.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, I had trouble even getting into for whatever, I think it's because my storage, I'm like up to 100% out of storage. And so it doesn't like to, it doesn't play nice.
It shouldn't impact storage because it's a Google Doc, right? But Krista, this is on a Google Doc. It threw the, through the Sustainable Bethel's server and the town. So it shouldn't impact your, your storage at all.
Oh, okay, here I see.
It's a link.
Yep.
Okay, so it, I don't, so it doesn't sound right this second that we should, this, I'm going to push this to next month.
Okay.
Okay? And so if you can look at that, I made comments, Tia made comments, Peter and Sunny were fine with whatever we did. So yeah, if you can take a look at that and you can make the comments directly on the doc.
Okay, okay.
All right, and again, it's a link, so you don't have to worry about storage at all. All right, I think that for me, the issue was like, if people don't, if commissioners don't show up after a certain time, we should keep that language in there.
Yes.
Tia had some really good comments.
Well, the thing about the, the number of minutes, because we've went, gone through this with the library, until the charter is changed, there, you can't include that in bylaws legally because it's not part of the charter. So until all the charter elements get voted on, those aspects that we were trying to integrate into the bylaws can't be integrated as an actual part of the document. They can be pending, but they can't be adopted as part of the document until after the elections, when whatever the charter revisions are have been accepted. Because, because we wanted to do this, too.
Right. I think it was the treasurer.
Thing are you talking about, Tia? The treasurer?
No, no, well, the treasurer, that's a whole different issue. This is the thing about if a member misses three meetings.
Oh, the resignation and removal.
Right, resignation and removal. So that's a big thing. The other thing is that it never mentioned adoption of Robert's Rules of Order as the fundamental underlying principle for how we conduct our meetings. So that was something that needed to be integrated in that. And then, as I had said, if we don't have a budget, because they didn't accept us as being a permanent thing, I wouldn't waste time with the treasurer.
Yeah.
So, so that was.
I think that that might have been sort of put in there because if, like, what would happen if somebody wanted to make a donation to the Sustainable?
We are an ad hoc commission appointed by the first selectmen, so it would just go through the first selectmen.
Yeah.
Okay. It can't come to us, we're not, we're not a permanent.
Can it be earmarked specifically for our use?
That would have to go to the first selectmen, and it would have to be approved by the board of selectmen. Yeah, it would have to go through a process.
But no, 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 what I'm saying is like, I'm a person, and I want to make a donation. But I want to make the donation to be used by the Sustainable Commission. Can I make it contingent, my donation contingent or earmarked for the Sustainable Commission?
Yes, you can. Well, it has to go through the process.
Yeah, and so if they don't, if they don't agree to that, then, you know, if the selectmen don't agree, then, then, then it goes back to the person. Their money, the monies go back to them, or they can make another decision as to how they wish to allocate that.
Okay, okay.
So that's why I was saying, we really, we don't, we won't have any funds, so.
I want to make a point related to municipal government. So even if, if, let's just make the assumption, even though that's not the case, and we are not going to be included, if this commission is not going to be included in the charter, even if we did have a budget, if somebody wanted a donating, it still has to go through a process because now you're changing the budget that was approved. So we have to, no matter what, we have to comply with municipal rules related to budgeting.
Yeah, but, but, but if you are, if you are a regular, not an ad hoc, but a regular part of the, the government, so let's say they had said that we would be a permanent commission, then the permanent commission makes the decisions about how you accept things. It no longer has to go to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, but still a process, yeah.
Right, so, so until that changes, and since, since they made that decision not to put Sustainable Bethel forward, we really, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I agree with Tia. I mean, you could, I suppose, leave it in the bylaws, but it really has no value until such time. And if you leave it in the bylaws, then you would have to kind of caveat that with all of this.
Right.
So I can't remember what else. You really.
Yeah, it's, that was pretty, I mean, there were the, and so the resignation and the removal thing, that was already in there. That was already in the first version of the bylaws.
Right, so since we're now continuing to be ad hoc, we could definitely have something like that in. And I'm going to say, I assume that then the first selectman would have to make a final decision on that because he ultimately had appointed all of us, right?
Right.
I would keep it because I think you need some kind of guidance on that.
Okay.
I guess I disagree because, once again, until it is a part of the permanent charter, you cannot, you cannot have it as part of your bylaws. You just, we've gone round and round about this with, 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 and maybe it's different because we're ad hoc. I don't understand. Then I don't know why we even have bylaws because, you know.
If you're not an initial part of the, you know, the charter, then do you need the bylaws? But this, there was a draft of bylaws from before that we worked off of. And those paragraphs were already in there. We did not change those.
Right, but they were, they shouldn't have been in there in the first place, is what I'm saying. Is, is that you can't, you can't put something like that in there unless it is part of the charter because that's, that's, the rules of how the committees run is based on what the, is based on the charter. So you can't, you know, you have certain rules that you have to abide by based on what the charter says. So if the charter doesn't have that element in it, and I hope to God that it does. I mean, I really hope that this gets affirmed. But until it does, you know, you really can't, my understanding, because we went round and round with two different lawyers and, and about this because it's, it's an issue. It's a very important issue for, for commissions and committees because the absenteeism issue, I mean, we had a person at the library who for 24 months never showed up. And as a result, we had a number of times when we could not meet. Yeah, so it's a very sensitive, I'm sorry, I'm being so adamant about this, but it's a really sensitive issue for me, and I know we've gone round and round about it. And that was, that, that, that's the ruling that we've been given. But the other thing is, we really do need to make a decision as to what the rules are that govern us. It, there was nothing in there that said, that I could find that said it would be Robert's Rules of Order.
Right, okay. But now you didn't put a, did you put a comment in with that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Here's that. I have a whole thing in there, and it is, yeah. It's very helpful.
Excuse me.
I don't see the.
Oh, you don't have to say. Oh, I forgot to say that. You do not have to say it because this is very boring.
Catherine, for one second.
Bye, thank you for having me. No, go ahead, Sunny.
No, I wanted to make sure we got their contact information before they left.
Oh, well, yeah, we have. It's all, it's all recorded. Yeah, Amanda will have that in a minute.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So I'm sorry, Tia, where is the comment about Robert's Rules? Because I would expect that to be at the top.
Um, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Shouldn't there be an article about using Robert's Rule as a governing protocol? This is what is, okay. So it's in there, but it's not, it should be up near the top, right?
Well, you can move that around. That's something you can do later.
It's just, yeah, it's just nowhere in there. That's all.
And, and now, so I'm interested in how you resolve that issue if, with the, someone who's not attending meetings, absenteeism, so you don't have a quorum, so you can't.
You have to either ask the Board of Selectmen to remove them, which is a very delicate thing.
Yes.
Or you have to ask the individual to resign, which is a pretty delicate thing as well.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so that's why, believe me, I, I, I love the idea. Don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm very much, I've been going around and really prosthetically. So my, my point is, is just until it gets voted in in November, I mean, you can put it, you could, you can integrate it with the understanding that, you know, or caveat it with, if, if this is adopted by the charter revision, this is how this is going to operate. You know, you can do that.
Do you think that you could approach the first selectmen and say, we want to put this into the bylaws? And, you know, would this be acceptable?
I wouldn't waste my time. You've got an election in November. What do you, why is it so critical?
I mean, regardless of who the first selectman is.
So also, I do know that.
You have a charter revision election in November. Right. It's all going to be, it's all going to be, it's going to be a huge ballot. It's going to be a huge ballot because you've got all these people running, and you've got all these elements of the charter revision that are going to be a part of it. And if you go back, I think it's two selectmen meetings ago or two months ago back, they made decisions about what was going to go in and what was not. So you can look at that, and that, and that's one of the elements. They understand that it's an issue. They, believe me, they understand it. It's, it's, it's kind of arcane, and if people haven't dealt with it, they don't really understand it. But, you know, meeting a quorum, especially if you have, you know, a certain sized board, can really be a challenge.
Yeah.
It can be a challenge.
So isn't one of the things that is on there as a revision, Tia?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying you could caveat it and say, you know, if, if, if this is adopted at the charter revision, this is, this is the language that we will use based on, but I would base it, go back and look at the language that they're actually going to use because they've, they've published that now. So, yeah, and I'm not trying to be a pain in the patootie.
No, 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 or it might be easier instead of putting a caveat in there is just to say that we will, with regard to resignation and removal, we will follow the charter.
But the other opportunity is that, my understanding is that some of the ordinances, is we were, we were created by an ordinance of, by the, that they are looking at that after the elections. So there might be an opportunity for that, you know, not, so, let's see. But I don't think this is ready for any vote because it's in.
No, 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 no.
I didn't recommend anything.
No, no.
So maybe you and Gabriella can get together and put a document like the Google Doc together.
Yeah. And, and what do you think about taking all of what's in purple? You know, should all of that come off? The stuff that's in the bottom? Because this is not a, it's not at all formalized, well, the duties of the secretary of the chairman. Should that all?
I think whatever was there before, I mean, if you can just kind of, you know, put in a summary, summarizer type of format, so the commission can take a look, can, you know, at least vote on it related to a recommendation to the first selectmen. I think you just leave it like that, but what Tia was talking about, I think you need to, you know, caveat that, that, you know, if this, this is a recommendation, assuming that this is part of the charter or, or a recommendation for, for improvements to the ordinance, something along those lines.
Okay, okay.
So we're going to table this till next month. Is that okay with everybody?
Fine with me. But I have to say, I am glad that we had the discussion.
Well, yes, on the agenda, that's what it's there for. Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's, and it's, and bylaws are always, you know.
Oh, they're a, they're a big thing.
But I think what we have to, ultimately, we have to have a form of it so that we would vote, a form of it get presented at a board meeting, if I understand the process correctly. And then you, so you submit it to people to review at a board meeting, and then at the next board meeting, you can vote on it.
Yeah. But I think it's still drafty form.
Right, right. I don't think we're, yeah.
So if you and Gabriella can get together and, and, you know, make those improvements, then we can, I'll put it on the agenda for next month. And then, assuming that everybody likes it, well, you know, we can put it for a vote in November, or we'll just continue to talk about it. Okay. Anything else about this? No, okay, good. All right, commissioner reports. You're up on the no idling. I got you for two things here.
Oh, okay.
So Peter's got a couple of comments that he'd like to share.
So the idea is that the town likes its petrol, gasoline, and diesel. So a sustainable way of dealing with that could be an anti-idle or an idle mitigation program so that when the police are babysitting a construction site, instead of running the engine, burning fuel to keep the air conditioner going, there's a battery and a solar panel so that the vehicle actually shuts off and air conditioning works, radios work, PC or laptop works. When it comes to any vehicle ambulance, it allows to sit at a scene with all of the equipment operating without having to run the engine. I don't think we have many lift trucks in town, but it's a way of working around idling to use your accessories. It's in, primary use is in trucks and fleets. And the best pilot I could think of in Bethel would be our ambulance and one or two police cruisers. And when you get into larger trucks, you're saving anywhere from half a gallon to a gallon of fuel per fill-up. So that adds up.
So you're talking about a potential pilot?
Yes.
To help with that.
Yes. Pilot could be anywhere from three to six months with data collection reported back to the commission. And then the commission could make a recommendation based on the potential savings for the town to put it out to bid for, they call it balcony solar and auxiliary powered batteries.
So I have a question. Is this something that gets retrofitted into an existing vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the cost of that?
Um, the battery for a police cruiser, I would say, would be between $800 and $1,000. And the solar panels are pretty inexpensive. They're not Chinese, they're Vietnamese and Philippine. They're actually adhesive based and designed. Those are in the hundreds. You're looking approximately $1,500 per vehicle and a payback on a light duty vehicle 13 to 15 months.
Okay. And, and then you don't have the emissions either.
Right.
And.
That's why New York City did it on, did, put the solution on 2,000 ambulances.
Wow, nice. So where does the solar panel go, on the roof?
Yeah. And the nice thing about the new technology and solar that I've seen is a lot of it's indirect. So you can. Yep. It collects off the side, so if it comes down a rear panel, it would still collect solar.
I also think that these should be on the maintenance vehicles in town because I have caught that idling while they're mowing the lawn.
Well, that's just bad policy.
Yeah.
So in that case, our fleet of those trucks are so old, I'd be surprised if they had air conditioning. And one of the things with the older, there is one requirement for the vehicle, and that has to have an electric, not a belt driven air compressor. So with a laptop or emergency lights and everything, that's pure electric. That's not a problem. So it can operate all of that. But for most of our fleet, except for the police fleet, they're still using belt driven compressors, so it would not be applicable. Now, if we have any ladder trucks to go up on street poles, that would be a solution also. So you could run the bucket truck up off of battery rather than the generator. The other thing that this does in a, in a stationary solution is. The other thing that this does in a, in a stationary solution is it eliminates generators. So in California and all of the carb states, uh, over the next couple of years, you're not gonna be able to buy a gasoline powered generator anymore. Um, so what's coming now is what I saw signs and reading for our battery farms. Um, so solar is kind of wasted at night. So if you had a way of collecting it and reusing it in the middle of the night, that's California's big problem. But stationary of power, um, I guess the, the retail version is the Tesla Powerwall. But what they've got now is they've got balcony power. So not everyone owns a home and wants to spend fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for infrastructure to maybe save it over the course of lifetime. So these are plug-in, they plug in AC, they're uh, anywhere from five to ten kilowatt hour battery packs, about the size of a briefcase. Um, they mount to the wall, they plug into your AC connection and they trickle charge all day long until the power goes out and whoop, the magic of AC, it reverses current. And then when your lease is up, you take it with you.
Yeah. So is, um, so can you explain again about the belt and the electric?
So, um, most cars up until about ten years ago had a belt driven compressor.
Okay, like a fan belt?
Right, just, uh, and, but it's just, uh, most cars have multiples. So they're turning the alternator, the fan, the fan and the air conditioner and the power steering.
And so newer cars don't have that?
Correct, they have electric.
Okay, all done by the computerized thing.
Yeah, so when you hit auto, it's, that's why your AC is always on because you can't regulate flow, but you can regulate a digital temperature.
Okay, okay. And, um, well, and, and also I think like little kudos should go out to the library for putting in those charging stations that are solar. Did you know about that?
That's another easy, so batteries have become a commodity now and a twenty foot shipping container filled with batteries with power at the building that I'm sitting in right now. So what I've learned is that American households typically run thirty kilowatt hours plus to keep all of our accessories going, where the average household in Europe is running ten to fifteen kilowatt hours. To keep their house. So, um, i- it's a heavy load, but, um, you know, our solar, our solar array on, on the landfill, uh, generates a lot. If we had battery storage, then we could probably make a pretty penny selling back to the grid. And become a peaker.
So, um, the company that came and did the presentation, the, that's in Francis Clark Park, they, what are their generate, aren't those battery?
Yeah, those are commercial batteries.
Right, so those are the batteries that I'm, similar to the batteries I'm talking about for stationary power.
Okay.
Yep. And it, and if at some point the town wishes to do a stationary power pilot using our solar, I've gotta guess they would be first at the door to come.
And is, is, in, in those batteries, like what happens with disposal or if, if it gets?
Um, not necessarily in our lifetime. Um, uh, right now recycling is a growing industry. Uh, it costs more to recycle a battery than it does to buy a battery. Um, it's, it's insane. Um, I have recycled fifteen hundred micro mobility e-bike batteries. It's a nightmare to do, but as soon as that becomes more prevalent, um, it's going to, um, they can reuse all of the precious metals. So.
Yeah, is there, is there tox, toxic chemicals in there as well? Because like a car battery has acid in it.
Well, so the funny thing is the most recyclable battery is the old lead acid battery because it's been around so long, we figured out how to do it.
Yeah.
We can recoup the plastic, the lead, the electrolyte. Um, it's the unknowns and the majority of these uh, batteries are plastic inside. So yeah, there's a ton of toxicity if, um, you know, there, there were a thermal event. Um, but the, the chemistry these days in stationary batteries specifically is non-explosive and non-runaway cells. So you don't really have, it, it's all a, a NIMBY thing, um, because people don't understand. Um, you could go anywhere in the world and you'd say, oh wow, it's a parking lot full of trailers. No, those are all batteries powering the town. Um, so, um, it, it's, we're still in the infancy of all of this. But why not lead as a town?
Yeah, so I, I, this is really good. I think it's an important initiative. Um, I think we need to kind of drill it down more related to a proposal on a pilot. Does that make sense to you?
Um, I can draft what I think a pilot might look like.
Yeah, I think.
I can bring, I can invite the solar company, um, to come in and give a presentation. I can do one better. I could save us listening to an engine, a solar engineer for an hour. And I can share, um, the presentation, um, that is solely focused on transportation based solar, so the idle mitigation and the auxiliary power.
Well, let's talk about this.
That was awesome, Krista, the way that person came through the grass to talk to you.
So, this is, this is a really important topic. I think if we could put something together, a pilot, you know, that makes sense that the town can wrap their head, their, their hands around, um, just to test it out and gather the data to see if it's something that, um, should be pursued generally. I think it's, we can, we should continue this discussion. Any other?
Um, one more comment, you're gonna need, um, like if you're gonna pilot for three months or six months, you need three or six months of several variables like without the solar panel to do a comparison, right?
So the, the venerable Ford Explorer is a known entity in the world. It's the police SUV of choice. So all of the data, um, surrounding it in every climate is well acknowledged. But to your point, yes, you'd wanna set a baseline, pick three to four vehicles. Uh, what do they burn on average per day, per week, per month? Um, and as soon.
How often are they filling up, you know?
Right, right. You've got, you gotta set a baseline so that you're either doing better or worse. Um, so, um, the good news is I'm not entirely sure the town knows how much it spends in gasoline. Okay, because I made the mistake of asking that question five years ago. That being said, if we got to a point where a pilot was approved, the first phase of the pilot would be setting the baseline.
Okay, so let's continue this conversation if you wanna put some.
Yeah, put together one page or.
Yeah, I think that kind of makes a lot of sense. All right. So the next is the flood mitigation, you, our next, you know, just general, when you talk about green infrastructure.
If we're talking about sustainability, the first thing that comes to my mind is nature. And, um, there's a problem in Fleetwood Park area from Fleetwood Park and Fleetwood Ave all the way up, uh, to Benson. So covers about twenty residents. Um, at least three times in the past four years, Fleetwood Avenue has been closed um, due to extreme water. Um, the situation needs to be looked at, I believe, by, um, by the town and as the Sustainability Commission, I would hope that we would at least recommend to, uh, Public Works that, uh, they dig up the records on the creek. Because I looked at a map of this creek, this creek affects the entire town. It comes off the hill, um, all the way down Fleetwood. It runs across grassy plain, under the train, all the way through. God knows, it's about ten miles of creek and stream running through the town. And at some point, Public Works had to have done something or, you know.
Is, where does that end up? Does it end up over like Frank, go back toward Francis?
Towards Francis Clark, back to that small land back there.
Do you know, I looked through the old records of the, um, uh, Conservation Commission back when Libby Kellogg was around. And there is data in there about mitigating. And what they ended up doing, I think, was dredging the creek. And that's how they.
What they appear to have done is created two backups. So one is grassy plain. Um, when it goes under grassy plain, there's a big grate, I guess, to keep the deer and children out. Um, but that is about a month away from being just a wall of leaves and brush as everything comes down. So there's, I would hope that there's a maintenance plan, um, in that location. They repaved Fleetwood Ave and over the creek, they changed the dimensions of the pipe underneath. And it comes in into a wall on the, I don't know what side of Fleetwood Ave it is, but, um, it comes rushing through at such a force, probably fifteen knots.
See his hand is up, see him?
Yeah, I know this is, it, it, not the same place, but I know Nashville Avenue, um, which is also the, where there's this issue about the, um, five story, um.
Yep.
Uh, affordable housing unit by, um, Vessel. Uh, one of the issues there is that that road also overruns. And with what they're looking to do in the paving and, um, basically blasting out the top of that ridge, um, that was one of the issues that came up. Um, and the Vessel people sort of intimated that they would be doing some work on that. But, but I, I guess, um, Nico, who had come here at, and spoke to us all about trees at one point, was at that presentation, uh, a couple of weeks back. And one of the things that he talked about was that the, um, the creek overflow there. And it's probably a different creek, forgive me, I just don't know. But, um, that, that, uh, was quite a problem. And especially in the winter time when that will overflow and then just freeze out.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if it's the same.
The creek is called the Simpog Creek.
Oh, is that the Simpog? Okay, okay. I couldn't, I couldn't, because.
And, and, and all of the little streams are just tributaries to it.
Oh, okay, okay, because over my end of town, it's all the lime kiln and that goes into the flat swamp.
Right, and coming off Nashville, it's running the same way.
Okay, yeah, and that's, it's a huge, it's a huge issue and it's a big concern of theirs as they're, as they're looking at and putting in this, um, a- as they're looking at potentially putting this unit in there, uh, because it will just, the runoff will be that much better. They're talking about putting in a retention pond that has some, um, new technology that they're talking about that will, um, uh, release the water in a very slow process. But, um, it's not something that we've used here in Connecticut previously. So there's a lot of concern about that. I, I, I just bring it up because, um, apparently this whole flooding issue is, is, is big.
Krista, um, so the Army Corps of Engineers.
Krista, just a second.
Army Corps of Engineers has reached out to some of the folks, um, in Bethel and then we never heard from them again.
Krista? What is the, the stream or the river that runs behind, um, like Bethel food, Caroloozy's?
Uh, it's the same one. It comes down and meets up somewhere behind, um, the old Caroloozy's liquor store.
Yeah, that's, that's where they were talking about the issue coming in is because when they put that, um, new Caroloozy's in, they did some redirecting of the pipe working. Forgive me, I don't know what the right ones are, but culverting, I don't know.
On to it, or yeah.
Whatever it's called, but apparently a- above that, so going back that Nashville road, it's just a covert in the side of the, it's not piped, uh, up for the whole section. There's a part of it that just is like a natural runoff, almost like a ditch right alongside. And if you go up Nashville Road, you'll see it. Um, and, um, they're very concerned that that's gonna cause a real runoff problem if that new, uh, if that, if that goes in place. Although apparently it's not something that can prevent that project from going forward.
Krista, okay.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to again make a comment about, because, you know, you say you, wherever your runoff is, if you've got a large volume trying to come into a smaller pipe or, you know, area, you're always gonna have flooding. So, you know, the, if, even if they have this big area conduit or whatever you were talking about, the, the new technology thing that's supposed to let the water off slowly, if we get three inches of rain, what happens then?
But if I'm not mistaken, Nashville Road, just like three blocks away from Fleetwood Ave is a hill. And it's a few hundred feet. And what was probably originally designed to be nothing but Hilltop and Worcester Mountain runoff. Um, now if you look at all of these creeks around town, everyone's got their gutters diverting into it.
Yeah.
Well, and on top of, I'm sorry.
No, that, that's just adds to it. And then to your point, any complex, so an anecdote, I wanted to put a wooden deck in my house in Staten Island, New York. And I had to get an architecture, an architect to, and an engineer to show that I was not affecting the runoff.
Well, and, and that's a really good point because one of the things that they're talking about doing with this, again, with this vessel, five story building, is they're gonna blast off the top of it and then, and, and, and at the top of the ridge. And, you know, in addition to, they think that it's going to affect the wells of a number of, of, uh, people, houses in that particular area. They do think it's gonna be a big runoff issue. And, um, there's some concern about whether or not what, what they're talking about doing with this retention pond is, is adequate to handle the runoff because of the incline.
There's nothing, there's no infrastructure in this town that I've seen that can handle
No, no.
what seven, five homes would bring to the infrastructure. I'm just thinking from a sustainable point, you've got the runoff, you've got the power. What does our town grid look like?
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, it's not one of the elements that can be.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
One more, Krista, and then I wanna move on.
Okay. So, so, so what happened with the Corps of Engineers? Why is that not being followed up?
I don't know, so I, I was reached out on Facebook on, on the Bethel page, asking, does anyone suffer flooding issues? on on the Bethel page asking, does anyone suffer flooding issues? The Army Corps of Engineers would like to know, please leave a message uh or or DM me at this email address. I just can't find the email. Otherwise, I would have done it again. Um but it was right after, it was probably September of twenty-four, a year ago, when we were swimming across Fleetwood.
Okay, so this obviously is a a really good topic for us to take up and a good initiative for us to take up. There are, my understanding, because I've had several conversations, there are discussions and potential plans in the town. And Peter and I will be meeting with Dan in the next few months to talk about what's going on and any way that we can help um do something about this. One of the things that I brought up to Peter when we had this in the initial discussion was green infrastructure. I did a couple of those in Norwalk when I was there and they worked really well. It's it's to me, I mean, if it's possible to do something like that, I like it. It's environmentally what makes sense. And it also um is less expensive and it's not as disruptive. And in the end, not only do you quote unquote, almost solve the problem, um it looks better.
Right.
Yeah, it definitely does.
There are certain trees you plant near water.
So that's something that can be a a topic of conversation related to blood mitigation in general. And yes, specifically, we talked about, I mean, you had people here, residents here from Fleetwood and Benson, and then the whole issue with the Nashville Road. Um but there are other areas of
No, the whole town.
Yeah, needs something. So that's something that we should explore related to the Sustainable Bethel Commission is the green infrastructure, if that's a solution to some of this. But we can talk, we can continue this conversation next month. So is that okay with everybody?
I have one question, maybe Tia knows.
Maybe Tia knows.
Is that complex running on town water or one big well?
Oh, I think she may have stepped away. Oh, there she's back. I had a uh. Okay, wait, Tia, you're on mute.
She was eating something. She's waiting to finish chewing before she unmuted.
Sorry about that. No, I've got a sourdough on my counter.
That's okay.
What was your question?
If if the Nashville project was town water or wells.
Town, it's going to be town water. But the problem is that along Nashville Road, most of those um houses are while they could attack that they 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 can run town water and sewer to them, they don't currently. And so they're on septic and and well, so that's that's the problem. But the the pinnacle project would be all town water and sewer.
All right, this is really, so let's let's continue this conversation next month um and think about how green infrastructure, because I think there are grants out there related to green infrastructure still. To help in that sense. Okay, one one more, Krista.
Okay, Peter, can someone find out whether there is a maintenance, you know, you talked about that big grid that's filled with leaves and stuff? Is there somebody who's going to come and unblock that?
Well, if if you get a chance, can you do you mind calling Public Works and asking them?
If there's a a creek maintenance program for all of the underpasses under the roads.
All right, we move on, but yeah, that's a good question that, you know, be good to talk to Public Works about. Um, okay. So Sunny, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Um, do you want to quickly, we have two things for you, um the energy battery surge. I know we just had that meeting and the other was the SBEA. If you want to do SBEA first and then the energy battery, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, yes. So to update the commission, Catherine um and I are working with the Economic Development Office, uh I don't want to mix the two up, yes, Office with Janice uh to support Janice with a program um that essentially is sponsored by EverSource using a portion of the bills that we pay, there is a fund that is available for EverSource and EverSource uses that to fund uh energy efficiency programs. One of them is called SBEA, which is a Small Business Energy Advantage Program. And what that offers is um no cost assessment for small businesses for a contractor to come in and assess if there are any projects that um would result in energy savings. And that is a no obligation, no cost exercise for the business owner. And once such opportunities are identified and there's a um project in place, there are also certain incentives available under this program uh which are not necessarily, you know, guaranteed, but they could be up to sixty to seventy percent um in some cases. Um and so at the end of the day, for those who go through the program and potentially get the incentives, it's a good opportunity to get some uh energy efficiencies in place at virtually minimal to uh no cost when you take everything in. So this looks like a very good uh program for small businesses to take advantage of. Um Janice, Catherine and I have been meeting um for a few uh weeks now uh to move this forward. And uh we are very close to actually launching an outreach uh program. And again, Catherine and I are assisting Janice with this um and moving forward with it. And uh once the program is launched, we also hope to collect uh data on how many businesses have been contacted, how many took advantage of the program and ultimately how many um had a positive impact due to this program, both in terms of energy savings as well as cost savings for their business and hope to come back with the commission. Um it looks like a no-brainer to move forward with this, at least for the no um cost energy assessment part of it. Uh so we're moving ahead and uh once we have all the marketing materials out there, we hope to put it on email, social media. And once we do that, uh it would be great to get everybody's support to, you know, spread the word around that. And so that's that on the energy assessment program. I will, yeah, thanks, Krista, right on cue. So I wanted to say I'll stop there for any questions before I move on to the next part.
You're on mute, Krista. Is it true that um like nonprofit organizations can take advantage of that as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Because I was interested in presenting that to the Historical Society. They own the the Second Meeting House. And um they could, it's an older building, they could use some assessment.
Yeah, yeah, Krista, so even for nonprofits, it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Did you want to talk about that real quick? I mean, it's a project that will happen after the SBEA, the the battery storage for small business.
Uh, correct. So we also met with the City Green Bank, um which is uh which has programs that support uh battery storage programs. Um earlier, this was packaged with the whole solar energy. So my question to them was, you know, why would anyone invest in battery storage when there is no solar energy component? So they don't really have clear answers on that. Um so we are kind of working through how that works, uh but there are similar to the same um you know, similar to the same energy assessment program options for small businesses. There are some such even for residences, but we're taking one at a time. Uh so we want to get the small business program off the ground, which includes basically businesses of uh any kind, including nonprofits. Um and once we have that moving and have some traction, then we want to spend some time on this and see in a way we can really push forward programs that ultimately continue to be supported by whichever agency or government entities. And there is real benefit to those who take the time to invest in um their time and effort in such uh programs. So that's kind of where we are, but we've started the conversations. They've shared a lot of information with us. Uh we need to consume that information and understand in which of these are worth bringing to our town.
Yeah, so these are all good programs and everything Peter and Sunny have been talking about um related to this commission, but um that falls within the parameters of our mission. And and what I love is now we can collect some data because that's a really important component of all of this um in order to move forward. Um so that's great. Um Krista, I don't, yeah, I I put that on there for you and it's okay if you don't have anything on the urban forestry. How long? No, it's fine. From from my point of view, I mean, I'm looking at this as like more of a guide. Quite frankly, because there's, I mean, you've mentioned it a million times, which is great. And I think there's so many of them all over town. But like, nobody really knows where they all are.
Okay, so um two things, the the forestry and the trees thing. Um so the garden club had someone from Connecticut, the Connecticut Agricultural Agricultural Experiment Station, which is in New Haven. She came and we did a walkabout in McCower and Bennett Park and she um did a whole tree identification. And we have a lot of um biodiversity in uh McCower and Bennett Park. Like we're we're talking like big trees, shaggy bark hickory, um uh oaks, um all kinds of things. Plus, we have like Tree of Heaven, which is a an invasive, but um but it was really interesting to see that there was so much um diversity. And then also when the um when uh the Eagle Scout project was clearing the area at the end of the pond at McCower Park, um they pulled down a whole bunch of bittersweet and uh stuff like that off of trees. There's an elm tree there, there's a sycamore, there's a silky dogwood. Those are all native trees to our area. And there are that coupled with this um person from the ag station coming. I was thinking, I was looking into what would um you need to do to um uh apply for or uh put in an application to make McCower and Bennett Park an arboretum. And so I've been looking into that.
Have you seen the one in Stanford?
Yes.
Yeah, that which is really cool.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's beautiful. Yeah, that.
It is. It is. And we don't have that many species, but we would be considered a small arboretum. And I looked into it, there's um there's a an organization and they, like, you have to identify all the trees with little placards and you have to, you know, like, have a planting plan and all that kind of thing. But it I was going to start counting the different varieties of trees and see if it we could actually uh make the cut to to apply for something like that.
That is a great project because it's it's not only identifying it and packaging it, but it's educational, right?
Yes, and it's also like one of the criteria for the, one of the criteria for the arboretum is that it's publicly accessible.
Yeah, yeah.
So you know, that's got that, check that box.
That is, I like it. I think, yeah, you've kind of narrowed it down. So that's great. Yeah, let's.
Yeah, so it was really, it was really, and I'm I'm looking to reach out to this person from the ag station because um they have walked the property a number of times and she could definitely help with um some of the um some of that. And then I also talked to Rachel in Park and Rec about doing something about all of the bittersweet and um poison ivy that's creeping up on the um you know, it's strangling a lot of the larger trees. Um oh, cottonwood is another one that that's there. And um so there is a procedure that both the ag station person and Ellen, who is a um landscape architect who is, works with the Land Trust, um there's a procedure where you cut, you leave whatever's in the tree to either to die off and hopefully fall off at some point, or you can do other things. But um then you paint, there's a little um uh chemical that you put on the uh root system and it is very good at killing off everything, even very deep and thick roots. So um I mentioned that to Rachel because they had done it um when we did the invasive cleanup on the sixteenth of August with the friends of Park and Rec. They had started, her guys had started to do it along one side of the pond. So
Okay.
Yeah, so we started already.
Yeah, I love it.
Pollinator path.
Pollinator pathways, thank you.
Okay, pollinator path pathway.
Yeah.
Um I have started an inventory list of there, there is a lot of plant material in those rain gardens. A lot of biodiversity again. So I have started an inventory list which is needed for the registration um of it as a pollinator pathway. And then and then I'm going to see too if, because they have these little medallions, pollinator pathway medallions, they're not very expensive, they're like twelve dollars. And I was going to see if either the town or the garden club or somebody could donate.
The friends, the friends of Parks and Rec.
Yeah, uh somebody. So the I was going to do the the at Parloa Park, I was going to do um the butterfly garden that's over there. So the garden club would, of course, you know, buy the little medallion for that. But the ones in McCower Park and stuff, they they might do those as well. So I don't know.
Well, these are great. Thank you. And just, you know, keep us posted. How, obviously, it's a collaboration, it's a sustainable, those are absolutely sustainable community projects for sure. And we want to make sure that there's awareness about it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because people really don't know. So whenever, so you know, let's keep talking about that. Okay, go ahead, Sunny.
I have a question. Um does anyone know of any um research um between flooding and having more forest coverage?
Mm-hmm. There is, there there is research on that. And there's also um um my my just drawing a blank. Um there is this whole program uh with um planting not just trees, but planting um uh native plant material to act on like a riverbank or something like that to act as a barrier um and preventing the flooding from coming in so much. And it's um it starts with an R and I can't say the word now. It'll come to me as soon as.
No, no.
But it would be something that um could be planted along and of course, there there it's plant material that likes wet feet. And you know, and it's and it's a way to prevent that flooding from occurring as much. Of course, it's not going to completely mitigate it, but it would help.
No, I think that's great. I mean, again, the point I'm trying to make is uh climate change is not obviously a simple problem to solve, nor will there be any point solutions that are going to mitigate these issues like the flooding. So as we approach um, you know, these two um points, I think a holistic approach um is probably in order and something to, I'm I'm sure someone at a much senior level like somewhere in some in the government organization is hopefully thinking about it. Um and you know, maybe there's a way to plug it into such efforts. Um so if there is such research, Krista, if you wouldn't mind sharing perhaps with all of us, um that might be helpful.
Um, yes, and um there's also um the Husatonic Valley. I can never remember, I always get mixed up with the trash people. They they put a lot of, they put a lot of um trees in at Bennett Park to try again to to on that, to secure the bank of the pond. And um so they're another organization that could help. And I know that they have summer programs. And I know that they have summer programs where they have students or, you know, they're educating. And it's kind of like, you know, labor. And they come in and they do the planting and that kind of thing. So, you know, there are organizations out there that we can reach out to, to, to help with that. Whether or not they would do it in a situation that is like, you know, someone's building something and they're, you know, it's like somebody's backyard. They're not probably gonna come in for that. But, but if, if you could implement it as, you know, if you're going to build this or, you know, if you want to help this problem in your own backyard, that would be, that's actually stewardship, you know, like of taking responsibility for your own.
Yeah, um, I think Tia has a question or a comment.
Yeah, and, and one of the big issues, and I, and I know this is a bit controversial, but I'll, I'll bring it up anyway. Is that we have an overpopulation of whitetail deer. And as a result, what is happening to our woods, to our native woods, is that rather than what normally would happen, which is as the older trees die out, the newer trees, you know, the baby trees are there. What's happening is the deers are eating a lot of the, the native trees and other plants. So that that vegetation is not, is, is not coming up. So as we're losing trees, because a lot of our second forest is now aging out at a very significant rate. So what's happening is all these invasives, like the bittersweet, like the bayberry, like, you know, mile a minute vine, all that kind of good stuff. Mudward, yeah, mudward. I mean, yeah, just all of that stuff. What's happening is that, you know, that's, that's not the stuff that they're eating. But, but they are nibbling on all of this under that normally would be there and replacing. So as a result, you know, we're not, what we're getting are a lot of, as Krista had talked about before, we're getting these invasive trees that are coming in as opposed to the native trees, which are much more delicious to the deer. So I know it's always a controversial thing, but you know, support your local hunter if you've got, if you've got
I know, I know. And it's Krista, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So if you have a bowhunter who is interested in being on your property or being in adjacent properties, please support them because they, they are really helping to cull the herd. And one of the things that's also happening is our deer population, in addition to its proliferating as greatly as it is, it is also having a lot of diseased animals. And, and, and less vibrant animals that are, that are overwintering. I mean, I've, I've seen deer with three and four fawns. And that's a very terrifying thought, you know, and it's really something we need to address. But I, I know the population really doesn't like this discussion, but it is a very important one and we need to do something about that. Because it's just gonna get worse and it's, we can plant all we want to put plants in. I was just talking to a neighbor who forested her property. But then what happened was the, over time, the birds would be eating the seeds from the bittersweet from other areas landing on her fence. And, you know, sort of pooping out the seeds. And, you know, and, and all of a sudden, what she didn't have an issue previously, she does now. And once that gets started, it's really, really hard to control. So it's just another, another thing for us all to be thinking about as we're looking at sustainability, because to your point, Sunny, is, is that it is a very holistic thing. It's, it's, it's the whole ecological cycle. You know, and, and, and I know we're, we're experiencing some real drought issues right now. And that is also stressing a lot of our native trees. And I know this spring, we didn't have the crop of peepers that we normally have because we didn't have the verdant springs where, I'm sorry, the ponds did not come, the vernal pools were not as, they were there, but they were a much shorter period of time. So we didn't get that population going again. So there's a lot of dynamic that's going on that, that, that is a very scary kind of thing happening to us all. I'll get off the soapbox.
So, so I have, I have
So I want to track more minutes, okay, for all of us.
Okay, so, so, um, yes, like I was in my own yard, very surprised at the deer nibbling on small dogwood saplings, because I thought, you know, these are native species and they're, they're nibbling away at them. And, and the deer are, because they're overpopulated, they're starving and they're diseased. And there's, you know, it is a big problem. I was just talking with my sister in Nantucket and they have a huge, they have a bigger problem than us. They have like ten thousand deer where they should have, their island can support a thousand deer. And so, and she brought it up at a, at a conference. And she has had on her property, she has invited a bowhunter to come and, and to hunt. While, you know, when hunting season opens. She mentioned something about sterile salt licks. That you put out these salt licks and then you don't think so, Tia.
I've heard of this and I did some research into it with my Audubon group. And, and the problem is it's introducing them into areas that you don't necessarily want them to be in. And so if, if they get dissuaded by the salt licks, then they look around and, and you've now created new trails and new areas for them to, to come in and, and, and
Why wouldn't you choose them? Why wouldn't you put it on their existing trail?
For, for the most part, people, people try to do that, but you know, people are lazy, forgive me, but people are lazy. And so they put it in an area where they think it makes sense. And a lot of times it's at the end of their property where you've now introduced them to come in. And once they come in, as we all know who garden, they sample everything. They don't always eat it, but they will pull it out of the ground and they will, you know, eat
And those little, those little fawns will, will taste things that most deer don't eat.
Exactly. They're sampling because mom's teaching them what's good and what's not. So it is, it is an issue. And, and, and so they did do a, a series of those salt licks. I just know about it because of the Audubon groups that I'm involved with along the Hudson River. And they were like, we thought it was the right solution. It wasn't, and we were so frustrated by the fact that it didn't, it didn't work the way we thought it was going to. A great idea, don't get me wrong, great idea. But they, but they found that it just
Well, maybe it just needs to be implemented differently.
So can I, okay, so we're gonna, I'm gonna wrap, this is a great, this meeting has been really, really great. Because everybody's pretty excited about these projects. And I want to just say that Sunny, your thought about a holistic approach, I mean, the stuff that you talked about, Krista and Tia talked about related to green infrastructure ties into flood mitigation in some way. So there are solutions along those lines. But yeah, so all of this is really important. Not only the holistic approach to, the systemic approach to everything, but the fact that we can collect data now and create, create something that's really impactful. So we're gonna continue this, we're gonna keep moving this along, albeit maybe slowly, I don't know. We'll have to see. But when we come up with some proposal that makes sense, then we can recommend the town to move forward. But let, let's continue these conversations. Does that all make sense to all of you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the other two items, those are Gabriella's, so there's nothing there to talk about. I don't have anything else. Is any, do any of you have anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Yeah, Chris, Chris's second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Really enjoyed this meeting.
Thank you all.